Hello. Welcome to our town hall meeting. It's the last Sunday of the month and we are back. Thank you so much for joining us. We'll make it an interactive discussion. We take any and all questions at this town hall meeting. And this is our regular district-wide town hall meeting where we have folks joining us from all the way from Pacifica down to the parts of San Jose, which is the southernmost part of the congressional district. As you all know, this is a new district, District 16, which is predominantly made up of of the old District 18 with a few areas from San Jose and along with a few areas, new areas from Pacifica, Half Moon Bay, El Granada and Moss Beach. And so it's the new District 16. And many of you know that I was running in the District 18 back in 2020. And so my background is that of Silicon Valley high-tech executive. Worked in Silicon Valley for many, many years in companies like IBM, Cisco. I currently work for a big data analytics company. And what I've tried to do is I've applied the tech framework of finding solutions in government. And it's a good story playing out so far because the people of Saratoga re-elected me. I was very honored with the most votes in 64 years of Saratoga. And in the election of November 2020, we made top two in the in the March primary and we every alternate year, we move from a March primary to a June primary. So this year it happens to be in June, June 7, 2022. And in the March 2020 election, we made top two. For the very first time, we had a democratic candidate that made it past the primary in this district. And we ran a very solid campaign, quite proud of the effort we put in spite of the pandemic. For at a point of time, we suspended the campaign. And we basically started exploring opportunities to help people around us. And we ended up calling 86,000 seniors because they were all quarantined in the early days of the pandemic, offering our help with medications, masks and groceries. And our volunteer team stepped up. We found volunteers in pretty much every city. And we made, our team ended up stitching about 4,500 masks that we donated to the Valley Medical Center. And soon as we could, before, a few weeks before the election, we started a campaign again. And unfortunately, we fell short, but our head is held high. We did 127,000 votes better than any challenger in the last 28 years of this congressional district. And we believe with your support, we can win this race. And it's an opportunity for Silicon Valley to bring some tech savviness. If you have seen the congressional tech hearings, I do the cringe binge. I have a good laugh because you can see a whole lot of ineptness with tech playing out on national television. And I'm not proud of that. You know, our congressional leaders could be tech savvy, but more importantly, they could be savvy with respect to handling the challenges of America. And there are some big ones looming ahead. Right here in California, we have Governor Gavin Newsom who called our state. It's looking like a third world state. And you know, I unfortunately have to agree with that because the crime has gone over the roof. And we see a whole lot of angst in the community when we are knocking on their doors, talking to people. People are afraid with the spike in crime back in during the Christmas timeframe, we had folks who were ransacking malls. You may have seen the Los Angeles railroad tracks strewn with Amazon boxes. And apparently the 1860s railroad robberies are back. And that's not good for a state like California. We are the golden state. And we can do a lot better. We have issues with California fires that keep recurring again and again. And seemingly, they have started treading into like November. I remember September 2020, we had huge issues with fires and our community was worried right here in Saratoga that it might might creep into our city here. You know, people were extremely worried. So California fires, water infrastructure. These are some challenges we have. We have challenges with housing, traffic, homelessness. And we need some real solutions. And that's the reason why I'm running. You know, as a mechanical engineer by education, I apply the getting things done approach into everything I seek to do as an elected leader. And you know, when you look at things that I've done and the city of Saratoga, we were fearless with respect to taking on challenges that perhaps was found daunting by others. We took on the challenge of burglaries, held over 100 neighborhood meetings, talking about the facts of the issue and engaging the community on a common task. How we march forward to ensure the safety of not only my home, but also the home of my neighbors. And we dropped burglaries by 47%, the largest drop compared to any time in city history, but also the largest drop compared to any other Silicon Valley city. So we managed to take a challenge and we demonstrated to the community that we were able to alleviate the issue to an extent. We still have burglaries, but it's a lot less even today. So we have stayed at that, at that lower threshold compared to where we were back in 2016. And just recently, we actually put ALPR cameras, the license plate readers. That took me a few years. But we finally have it approved in our city. And it's a pilot project that will be playing out. We have modeled it after the La Salto Hills project. We have to work with the county, the county sheriff. But it's coming together well. Then you look at my ability to apply the tech framework of challenging a very powerful water utility company. San Jose Water Company supplies water to a million people of Silicon Valley. And in a drought, their profits had gone from $22 million to $52 million back in 2016. So since then, I've been battling them with all their with all the rate increase proposals. And so far, we have rejected nine of them or pushed back successfully nine of them. And you know, the PUC is obviously the deciding authority. And we created a mobile app to send out, make it easier for our residents to send out protest letters and emails to PUC, engaging them on the issues with San Jose Water Company. And we never thought we would actually be able to push back when we first started. But I still remember that moment when we first, when I heard that advice letter 501 was defeated. I was like ecstatic because I said, you know, I jumped into a problem not knowing how we could push it, but my take is when there is a problem, you have to step up and do something, do anything. And that's what I was trying to do. So so far, you know, we continue pushing back on San Jose Water Company. But that's the level of diligence we bring. When there is a challenge, we better step up and do something, do anything. And that's the driving force behind my political efforts. And the reason why I run for Congress, people have asked me this many times. And my question is, my answer is very simple, which is, you know, when you have Silicon Valley innovation economy, which is providing about 45% of California's tax revenue. And this is, this is not only sparking the economy here, but it's actually creating wealth for countries across the world, our innovation economy. And we have never had anybody in our congressional history from Silicon Valley that's been tech savvy. And that's an opportunity, I believe, we can not only grow the economy, but also address some of the big challenges that I talked about. As we, as when I reference Gavin Newsom and the third world's country status that he was talking about. So there are opportunities for us to make it better. And that's the reason why I'm running. And with your support, we can get there. And what I can promise you is we'll address some of the big challenges. You know, no challenge is too big or too small. We will address any challenge that will make life better for each of us. And that will help create a better opportunity for our young kids, for the youth of our society today, to ensure that they will have an opportunity down the road with everything we do today. So anyway, that's a quick intro of myself and what we'll do is let's take a few questions. And I believe we got a few questions in the email when people are sweeping. And we'll pick up some of those questions first. Okay, let's see if there are any questions yet. Okay, so let's take the first question. We will. It's from. Let's see. Okay, the first question is Victor from San Jose. And he basically is asking, it's a long drawn out question about the Putin-Russian-Ukraine situation and trying to get my take on that. So you know, there has been a you know, the media is abuzz with the situation there and we are watching it very actively. And obviously Putin has played his cards. People were not too sure as to what was going to happen. But we were watching and perhaps that should have been the time to take action and ensure that Putin wouldn't move forward with what he was essentially proposing or planning. And Putin is a demagogue. He wants to expand. And I'm surprised the world didn't do anything prior. And now we are looking at a World War III situation. It is actually very alarming to me. And you know, in Silicon Valley, we are talking about the Web 3.0. Here we are talking about a worldwide World War III. And we are looking at violence, destroyed buildings, war casualties. It's not a good story playing out for sure. I do have to call out the courage of Ukraine, the citizens of Ukraine. They are fighting. They are brave. They are holding on to their cities. And there are folks, you know, regular people like you and me are stepping up to battle. And I cannot even imagine that happening, but it's happening there in Ukraine. And so far, it seems like they're holding the fort against the push by Russia. One of the things they are asking is to basically make it a no-fly zone that would really help them out quite a bit. And I think the world needs to rally on that, rally around that. And we have to figure out a way to stop this war. If Putin is successful, then he will likely go to Poland. He will likely go to the Baltic countries, Estonia, Latvia, Lithuania. You know, they are all going to be targeted next because once he's emboldened, he's going to charge ahead. Now he's feeling the desperation today because I saw this morning that he's already talking about the nukes, the nuclear warheads that he has. And that is not a good thing. You know, it should never be in play. And so they need the help. Ukraine needs the help. President Zelensky, he's feeling very helpless because he's talked about, he's feeling as if the world has left him on his own. And many years, few years back, they gave up their nuclear status and this is what they get in return. So it seems to, it seems like all the treaties, agreements are are can be discarded at the drop off ahead. And this is clearly destabilizing the region. Germany has announced like $100 billion spend, defense spend. And then I was listening to a very, very good video from, that was Kira Rudik, a Ukrainian parliament member. And she said there are more surprises in store for Russia. And she was basically calling out the situation on the ground. Apparently, their leaders have moved about two hours away from their capital in different cities. And they are still trying to manage the cities. In fact, interestingly, Kira Rudik was actually talking about proposals and legislation she has to rebuild, rebuild the country, which is like, which is telling me that, you know, stable heads up prevailing, you know, in spite of everything going on, you're not only fighting back, but you're also trying to see how we can plan the future. Interestingly, Russia hasn't stopped broadband connections. Their networks are still up. Apparently because these are Russian companies who are in business in Ukraine. And they do not want to forego the money that they will receive. And so that tells you that sanctions can work. And the swift ban is a good thing. Economic sanctions, we need to apply full throttle. And the energy companies in Russia are supplying energy to different parts of Europe. And we need to figure out, you know, a way to reduce that dependency. And one consideration, a thought would be to see how we can, US can get in the game of supplying energy across these different countries and reduce the dependency on Russia. And essentially, you know, sort of sideline Russia in that region from an economic standpoint, that's where that's where the uprising happens. That's when people say that we cannot have a dictator like Putin. We have to do things better. And you know, when the economy will, the economic conditions sink in, that's when the globalization efforts of going out there and conquering the rest of the world will fade from mind because now you have to have food and simple basic needs of society that will come into play. The other component of this is, excuse me, with respect to NATO, you know, for example, NATO has expanded. There are different countries right around Russia that are now NATO countries. And if you, if you know the 1823 Monroe document and how America basically does not allow the deployment of warheads around America. And we have gotten into major conflicts with countries. And if you remember, or rather, if you, if you have read about the Cuban missile crisis that happened where we almost went to a nuclear war with Russia because we had potentially warheads situated in Cuba, just a few miles away from the US. And if that is a cause of alarm for the US, then we have to also understand the frame of mind Russia is. You know, it's like if a rule is applicable to America, then the rule needs to apply to everybody else too. And, and you know, Putin might have used this as an excuse to embark on his worldwide tour that starts in Ukraine. And hopefully we stop him right there. We send him back to Russia and peace prevails. That's really what we can pray and hope for. And but we have to be cognizant of how this is going to change, change Europe for the foreseeable future. And we have to not only protect Ukraine, but also ensure that Putin does not continue with his world war and we stop him right there. And you know, simple things like economic sanctions, the no-fly zone, we have to approach it from a smarter standpoint of how we can negate Russia from an economic standpoint would probably be a good way to approach the problem for now. But we have to be, we have to move fast. We were waiting and watching for many, many weeks and that's where perhaps you might have heard. So anyway, those are some of my thoughts. It's not a complete answer yet because things are moving forward. But that's, that's some of my perspectives with how the situation is looking right now. Okay, so sorry about the long drawn out answer. Let's go to the next question. I see Linda from Pacifica. You were visiting our neighborhood. I heard you were meeting at Pedro Point Field. But I missed attending you, attending the meeting. Surprisingly, you knocked on my door a few hours later. I really liked your commitment to be here for us, spoke volumes to me. How would you summarize your Pacifica discussions? So thank you, Linda. It was a pleasure meeting you and thank you for joining our town hall meeting. And you know, essentially, I really enjoyed meeting the neighbors. We gathered around the field. And we talked about some of the challenges going on. Obviously, development is a big concern right now. And also the vegetation, wildlife and how this would affect growth and in Pacifica. You know, I would like to say that back in 2019, when we were running this campaign, when we first started this campaign, we actually started this. We met with the folks in Loma Mar, La Honda, Pascadero. And this was, it was in District 18 back in those days. Even though in 16, you know, we now have added a few other cities like Pacifica and Half Moon Bay. And the reason I went out to meet the folks there, I had meetings at the the Loma Mar Market, meeting with people. I had a town hall meeting there actually. And it's very important for me to address the challenges of everyone. And seemingly what I heard that day, Linda, was that people in Pacifica feel that they have been ignored. And when I heard issues about fire challenges, fire insurance, traffic, transportation, how it is very easy, the fire routes can get clogged up and people can be at risk. And the sea level rising, obviously, you know. And this was very similar to the issues I had heard in the communities of Loma Mar, La Honda. Protecting the coastline is very, very important. And so, so my, I heard, this was the very first time I had a discussion with the folks in Pacifica. In fact, after the meeting, I knocked on doors. I went to Pedro Point, a great lookout point, and I was mesmerized by how beautiful it was. And I did not dare to go down the steps and come back. It looked very pretty, but I wanted to knock on some doors and have a few discussions with some neighbors, which I did to get their perspectives. And then I was again there in Half Moon Bay, meeting with a few other groups of folks. It was a good meeting and Linda, I hope to be back again. And the bottom line is the channels are open. You can find me through my website, rishikumar.com. At the very bottom, you will find a phone number to reach me and also email address. And I respond to them myself. And obviously, it's very beautiful out there. We would like to keep it pristine. Now, one of the things that I did as a council member of Saratoga, I was a Lone Ranger that started speaking about the issues with building a 300-room hotel on a high-fire-risk hillside that had a very narrow road leading up to it for miles. And initially, I was the only one who spoke against it that would disrupt wildlife, vegetation. I spoke about the challenges that would be imposed upon the neighbors to have a project like that. And I did not get dissuaded just because I was the only one who was airing out these types of thoughts and ideas. But long story short, that project was defeated. So I had two other council members who came over on my side. And they decided to vote against the project, even though one of the, one of the council members who joined me was actually the sponsor of this particular project. So when you hold your ground strong, the world will rally around you. That's what I believe in. And this is how I managed to carve out a political path of success in my community. The very first time I ran for city council, we barely escaped with a 71-vote margin in 2014. 2018, we've been with the greatest number of votes in city history because we were able to address some of the big challenges. And even though I may not get the support of the rest of my city council, but if I believe it's important, we have to take the time, we have to innovate, we have to approach it, focus upon it. And the results will follow. And that's the, that's the commitment that I'm looking to take to Washington as well. Thank you, Linda. Okay, next question. Dimitri, Dimitri is asking about SB9 and many cities are pushing back today. What can my city do today? So this topic has appeared on many of our prior town hall meetings. So my quick perspective on this is firstly, go to rishikumar.com/managedgrowth. It's managed with a D at the end, managed growth. And that provides my perspectives of housing. There is an op-ed piece there. Please do click on that op-ed piece and read it. And essentially, it's focused a little bit on SB9. What SB9 does is it allows lot splitting. And on a single-family lot of today, you could potentially have six to eight families living on it down the road. So essentially, you do the math. Look at your population of your city today. It could go between two to six times in the next decade. If this, if this continues, and obviously the bill is live, there are projects that are moving forward based on SB9. And you know, obviously, if you're not constructing projects yet, they are still getting qualified this early in the game because it was this SB9 went live on January 1st. The second component of this is, you know, how the infrastructure has not been considered at all, parking conditions. There are no constraints being placed on housing because our Sacramento legislators are saying that we need housing in California. We don't build enough housing. I may agree with that. But we have to do it right based upon the fundamentals of urban planning. And what I've noticed based upon news articles that have been published, many of these sponsors of these types of bills are getting a lot of campaign contributions from the real estate lobby, from the real estate groups. And they are addressing the needs of the real estate friends. And that's not how we should define the future of a state by sell-out politicians. I don't favor that. And that's the reason why I'm pushing back on this. Now, how do we, how do we, what can my city do? So a ballot measure that was supposed to be on the ballot this year, there was a petition and we were collecting signatures. In my city of Saratoga, we had over 140 who signed up to gather signatures and see how we could get local control back. Because what it does is this ballot measure, it amends the California constitution and which will allow the local laws on housing to prevail. The effort is good. We didn't have enough time because we had to collect about 1.5 million. A shout out to theneighborhoodvoices.com, theneighborhoodvoices.com. Check out the website. They are leading this effort and I'm helping out. And we have many elected leaders from the Silicon Valley, from this South Bay area who are engaged with this effort. In fact, I have an email group that communicates with elected leaders from 21 counties across the Bay Area. I call it the Northern California Mega Region. And communicating with elected leaders about this issue and a call to action. So Dimitri, you know, great question. Please lead effort in your city and it needs many of us engaged with this challenge to ensure that we are able to push these types of inconceived laws back and local laws can preempt, cannot be preempted. Okay, next question. We have Karen from La Salto Hills. Crime is a huge challenge. In your email, you mentioned that Governor Gavin Newsom is calling California as a third-world country. How are we going to fix it? So you know, Karen, firstly, congratulations. Your city has rolled out these ALPR systems, which is what we are doing here. It will make your community a little bit safer. But we have to do a lot more. And my record was to drop burglaries in my city through a series of actions and measures, you know, rolling our neighborhood watch programs, putting surveillance systems at the ingress, egress points of neighborhoods that was actually developed by neighbors, wrote the code, put the data, the video data on Amazon cloud. We figured out how to restrict that data, all that best practices to ensure that the privacy issues of people are being addressed. And then also rolling our block parties, we provided an ability for our neighbors to connect, communicate and collaborate. And this is a key to making a neighborhood safe. Visit rishikumar.com/safety/safety and you can download your top 25 safety tips for your city of La Salto Hills or for any other city for that matter. So and if you download that, you will see a few simple tips and hints of how you can create deterrence for your home. If we create deterrence in my home, in my neighborhood and in my city, in my county, then the crime goes somewhere else. You know, we can do our bit to make it safer because obviously we cannot have a patrol car right on our street 24 by 7. That is a little difficult. But the law and order situation has seemingly gone a little haywire. And you know, back in 2019, pre-pandemic days, when we would go to AMC Mercado, we would leave the windows, you know, rolled down because we didn't want a car to be broken into because gangs would come in there and they would pretty much break the windows of every car and see what they could find inside. They didn't care if something was there or not. The first, the first call to action for them was break it. And then, then let's see what we find inside. So this is unlike anything that we have seen in Silicon Valley. It needs focus. It needs to be addressed. And I promise you that as your congressional rep, I will do my bit to see how we can make it safer. No problem is, every problem is my problem, especially when people are complaining. I will figure out what needs to be done to ensure that. And that's a promise, Karen. Okay, here we have Manuel from San Jose and you know, he sent his his question in Spanish. Thank you, Manuel. And so he says, I received a note from you in Spanish at my door. Firstly, I have a lot of respect for you. You came to my neighborhood. I spoke with some of the neighbors. They say you're a good guy. These are folks who met you. I cannot remember anyone in the last 10 years who knocked on my door. I hear you're fighting San Jose Water Company. What is the one thing you will do for my neighbors in San Jose? Good question. So you know, interestingly, Manuel, you know, as I was, perhaps if I, you know, probably it is the neighborhood that I was there last week, earlier this week. And you know, as I was leaving, it was about a little late in the evening and it was a cold night, if you remember. Like Tuesday, Wednesday, it was extremely cold. I could see this fire somewhere. And the freeway, I believe it's 101, which was right behind the neighborhood. And there were homeless people who had actually And there were homeless people who had actually built a fire to keep themselves warm. It, it was, it just felt bad that this is what is going on in Silicon Valley. Our, our income inequality gap increases. We can see a lot more tents over the last many, few years. And, and apparently nobody cares for them. And, or, or perhaps even if you do, it's, we're not able to, it's a massive, it's a problem of massive scale. We are not able to address them. And the problem is getting out of hand. And so all I can tell you, Manuel, is I'm here to listen and I'm here to act. I'm a mechanical engineer by education. I'm not a career politician. When we take up a challenge, like you heard me before with burglaries with San Isawata Company, we always figure out a way. The problem is you cannot do it all. And we have to focus on two or three things. And, but what I can promise you, Manuel, is I'll be there in your neighborhood again and again to hear your challenges, your problems and collaborate with trying to find opportunities and solutions to make it better for you and your neighbors. That I promise you. Homelessness and crime are a big challenge. And, you know, I will be doing everything I can to make life better for everyday people like you and me in, in every part of a congressional district. Thank you, Manuel. Ray from Menlo Park, we have an embarrassment playing out in Menlo Park with our housing element, our housing plan, community outreach committee quit on February eleventh. All of them quit. Wow. And now our city will hire a community-based organization to take over the outreach work. I've seen your emails in your stance. Can you explain your rejection of the housing eleven sites? Also, where do you think the ballot measure is going that you referenced in your email? So, you know, the ballot measure unfortunately got pushed out to twenty twenty-four because we didn't have enough time. And, and I explained a little bit about it. It's important that we, we follow through and get it on the ballot. And based on polling, we believe seventy, eighty percent of California favors, favors local laws. They do not like preempting of local laws. So we just have to get it on the ballot and hopefully all these bills like SB nine, SB ten, SB thirty-five will be defeated. Okay, so back to the housing element. Housing element is, is a very unfortunate thing that is happening because go to rishikumar.com/managedgrowth and you will see a summary of the issues going on. One is we have inflated RINAs numbers. You know, most of our cities have been given three, four, five times the numbers that were normally given to us. And it's impossible to build. And when you fail, when you fail to build and actually no city actually builds housing. It's the, it's the real estate groups that show up and they pull permits to build housing. If they don't build permits, then nothing gets built. And then what happens is SB thirty-five kicks in where the real estate groups can go straight to city staff and get their rubber stamp approval of projects without going through a public hearing. And, and if I do the math, you know, with the housing element, you have about forty percent low income, very low income housing. With SB thirty-five, you only need ten percent affordable housing. So why would anybody want to build projects, build housing through the housing element? Because the, the real estate groups, they are there for the business of making money, for profits. And so if they have an opportunity to use SB thirty-five and build housing, that will be a little bit more profitable. That's what they're going to do. So this is where we are going. I called it a train wreck. I also called out the nexus between sold-out politicians and the real estate groups. And I could not fall behind. I tried to, to, to lead our council to reason. Talking about, you know, what we needed to do. For example, urban planning elements are very, very important. Make sure we address traffic. Make sure we distribute the population with equity across the different school districts so that not one school district will feel the pain or burden or, or, or perhaps the benefit of having, of having new students in their, in their schools. And then also to ensure that not one intersection of the city, not, we don't pack the density in a couple areas so that it leads to traffic headache. Now, any intersection, if it gets clogged up, will lead to causing hardship for everybody else in the city. So spreading it out, equity-based approach and making sure that we consider sites that are viable, protecting parks, all that stuff, you know. So I defined a plan at rishikumar.com/thesaratogaplan. And unfortunately, we did not consider all the sites that we should have considered. It was a little bit disjointed in terms of how we approached this. We are, we, our council added a few new sites to it. But, but then they pulled all of them back. And we went with the, the original plan that was proposed by the planning commission. I was not completely happy with that. It is where it ended and I could not find it in my heart to support it. And I call it a little bit of a whack-a-mole approach where we were trying to put population based upon neighborhood pressure. But we still ended up going with the original plan. You can find the details at rishikumar.com/thesaratogaplan. But the bottom line is the housing element will divide the community in, in every city. It's going to stress the city. Our city council members were stressed, I could tell. And this is not something that is, is good for the future of our cities. Because we don't have a hand in terms of our, what our citizens want, how we have defined the objectives and aspirations of our citizens. We just have to follow a state mandate, which is a recipe for failure. So anyway, thank you, Ray, and I'm there to help you. Please reach out if there's anything I can do. Stephanie from Portalo Valley, Rishi, do you hate pharma? Weren't they helpful for us during the pandemic? Stephanie, I don't hate pharma. I, I, we do benefit from, from, from pharma, the vaccinations, you know, they actually, global sales of COVID vaccines and treatments have gotten to about seventy-nine billion dollars, seventy-nine billion dollars. So they have done well. They have obviously helped us get through the pandemic and my respects to the industry. But penicillin, sorry, insulin is eight hundred dollars here in America and it's only seventy, seventy dollars in Mexico. And this was invented a hundred years ago. Our healthcare, healthcare costs have, have grown, have exponentially increased. And there are families who are having to make compromise over food, over shelter and healthcare, and healthcare gets pushed to the background. Secondly, the greed with the opioid crisis, the pharma companies were responsible for it, a few of them. And, you know, unfortunately, there is an element of greed that is playing out with pharma. You know, some, somebody else told me the other day that, Rishi, when I take my medications, it only increases over time. I, and I've talked to some of our friends. Once you start taking medications, it never goes down. We sort of keep things in check. So can pharma do a root cause and actually cure some of these diseases? Obviously, some of these could be huge moneymakers for the pharma industry and, and they are a for-profit group. They need to make money. But at the same time, I think we need to address the health challenges of America. There is obesity at play. Our diet is sometimes not right. So pharma needs to develop a little bit of a conscience and, and see how we can really help people. And so anyway, you know, I, I, I do respect the industry. I'm a, like I say, I'm, I'm an engineer. The, it's, it's very important that the industry flourishes. But at the same time, we need to address the challenge that we see in the country with the rising drug prices. So, and Stephanie, I'm, I'm happy to engage with you further on this topic. Misha from Las Gatos says, I have a fun question for you. I've been following you on social media. And it would be nice to have someone like you who's tech savvy in Washington. What is the one thing you would like to do, Rishi, when you get to Washington? Well, Misha, thank you so much. I really appreciate that. So my, my top thing is term limits. I can see how our politicians stay for far too long. And this was the email that I sent out to the district a couple of days back, talking about term limits. When I'm knocking on doors, people tell me, Rishi, we need fresh blood. And I cringe the day Crown Dracula, Count Dracula will open the door. But kidding aside, I, I see that the drumbeat is beating because politicians stay there for far too long. And then the nexus of big money in politics is, is wrecking the American society, you know, with opioid crisis and all that kind of stuff, fentanyl. And so, so those are challenges that I would like to see how we can take that national platform and addressing this, making change happen. Now, politics is local. I talked about some of the other challenges through the other questions, just in terms of how I try to address them. And I seek to take on challenges, big challenges that are impacting us locally. Please look up rishikumar.com/aboutrishy. It will give you a track record of what we have tried to do. No challenge is too big or small and we will engage to make Silicon Valley the life better of you, Misha, Misha and of our, our, our neighbors, our cities here in the district. That's a promise for sure. Ashok from Palo Alto says, you reject PAC money. How are you going to win this race? As you had two times more money than you last time. It's a money game. I agree. It's a money game and, but we will stick to it, raising money from people. Rohana, Congressman Rohana has done very well raising money from people. And there is a pathway and there are many more people who are running, who are rejecting the dark tainted money. I believe that's the change of culture that America needs. And the winds of change are sweeping the country and we believe the days of sold-out politicians are numbered because people are paying attention to these types of data. And someone like me has a great chance just because we reject the dark tainted money. Okay. Let's see, Ronald had a question on term limits. I think I touched upon that. Oh, Ronald is asking, how can we get our politicians in Washington out? And I believe, you know, we need to have people looking at the, you know, when, when you exercise your vote, just do the due diligence and research. You know, look at how these politicians have impacted, how many bills they have created. You know, it's very easy to send out an, an email on a Friday evening which has lots of talking points. I did this, I did that. But look at it from a lens of how many problems did you fix for us? How have you made life better? And if a politician has stayed too long, look at their resume before you vote for them. That's all I can say. And, and then very quickly, you know, the, the American people will enforce term limits in many parts of the world. You know, if a politician stays, incumbency has a huge disadvantage because people are very diligent about looking at records. So that's what I would recommend, Ronald. Okay, so those were some of the questions we had. Let's see, are there anything else? I don't see any further questions. And I truly appreciate all of you joining in. Voting begins early May ballots, absentee ballots, California is hundred percent absentee ballots. And please make sure you cast your vote in this upcoming election. And I would be very honored to have your vote and support. Please go to rishikumar.com/aboutrishy. We have multiple languages, translations there. And, and go to rishikumar.com/reportcard, which, which basically does a contrast and comparison between my record versus the incumbents' record. And if you have any questions, please call me, text me, email me. And I might be knocking on your door very soon. Thank you all for joining in and I truly appreciate you taking the time on a beautiful day that's playing out here, Sunday in Silicon Valley and we'll stay in touch. Enjoy. Bye.